Before we begin tonight's meeting, I just would like to ask everybody for a moment of silence in memoriam of Mr. David Lohner, who was a social studies teacher here for thirty-three years, a former colleague of mine, and passed away about ten or eleven days ago. So can we just have a moment of silence, please? Thank you for your thoughts. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda of tonight's meeting? Any discussion? All in favor, please? Moving on to item D, superintendent's report.
Yes, I've got quite a few things to report out this evening. First of all, we received great news from Senator Ritchie's office last week. Senator Ritchie has secured a special budget grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars. The intention of this funding is to restore anti-drug abuse counseling and education programs to all schools in Oswego County through the Farm and Family Services. This is, obviously, our district will benefit from this. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Weatherup for forwarding us the information on Central Square alumni Shane Odell, as he was featured on the cover of Casanova College's newsletter, along with an article in the magazine getting the most out of every day. Thank you. Later in the agenda, I'll be recommending that the board pass a resolution for the elimination of the gap elimination adjustment for the 2015-16 annual school year budget. The board will also be asked to pass a resolution in support of a Berger Commission approach to reforming the allocation of school aid. Both of these are two statewide school finance consortium initiatives that I would like to support. Also, Maureen Lad, board president, Mr. Krips and I met with Central New York Raceway Park developer Glenn Donnelly, and as I have informed the board, there really has not been any changes to the information that we've been working with. He is hopeful this fall, after the November elections, there may be more movement on the state side. They continue to proceed with Phase One implementation, working with many governmental agencies to begin the building of the Raceway Park. We also received the environmental impact report, and currently our attorneys are looking at that, but they're very confident that all of our concerns have been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Minch. Moving on, please, to item D, open forum. Mr. Minch?
Yeah.
And speaking on a correction. Do I have to go through my spiel about two minutes and all that kind of thing? Are you next?
It was based on the notice of some state aid. The sense that that notice has been pulled and revision is going back to the law of 2012, which says the state aid will be cut off when the building is sold. So I just wanted to correct that and let everybody know that that's the case.
Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to board forum, is there any board members that have things they would like to bring up at this time?
Well, I just wanted to, I guess, comment on what Mr. Minch said, and I wanted to follow up Joe with, I guess, confirmation that that's what you want me to know, that the building aid is what will be impacted with the closure and that it won't be impacted until the building is sold for the ownership transfers. Is that correct?
That's the information we've received from the state.
Okay. I guess I just feel that it's important to bring this up because I know in the past that has been the information, the opposite of that has been what we've been told, and I know it's been a factor when discussing whether or not CSI should remain open or be closed, or even if we could call Miller Hawke for a time in anticipation of the middle school possibly being sold, and that there was a concern that those buildings couldn't be left without students because we would lose aid. And it seems, based on this information, that that would not be the case, and I just wanted to bring that to light because I think it's been a very important factor in the question.
Thank you.
Joe, can we talk about the UPK decision? The fact that we're going to leave it as an external?
That was my recommendation to the Board of Education, that we stay with the PTO, based on a couple of things. Number one was the cost, but also I've received information, and Sarah also shared information, which I appreciate, that there are some families that would rather have two-day for a three-year-old and three-day for a four-year-old program. So that would be my recommendation.
Anything else to report for him? If not, I'll bring up the memorandum and the letter we got from the Cleveland Village Board, asking for the playground equipment to be, to, basically, to get donated to the village so that they can move it to a appropriate place. I think y'all got emails regarding that, copies of that. I sent letters to the president and the co-presidents of the PTOs at the Cleveland Development Tree and the D. K. Cole. Got a very nice letter back, it was a stringer saying that she had been contacted by at least one of the co-presidents from Cleveland and was very much in support of it. So I don't know if there's any other comments or here that people would like to make on that, but if not, I would actually entertain a motion that we move to donate that to the Village of Cleveland.
I would like that.
Okay.
That we donate it later.
Is there something to add, Mr. Stiller? Is there any further discussion?
Motion to approve the time in respect of the purpose to be ongoing. Appeal to the Commissioner, it's one time favor of donating, right back, and donating to the school by those people that have been in the process, doesn't seem proven, it's donated under the time limit, it's not considered.
Well, we certainly could make the donation pending the final outcome of the appeal to Commissioner of Education, or we could table it and come back to it later.
It seems pretty prudent to do it regardless of sale or donation, depending on the appeal of the Commissioner goes against, goes to file the appeal. It doesn't make sense to ship the building, let it be moved, it's got taken out there until it's absolutely sold, it's another entity, and all you need is to figure out to keep it, it's still our profit.
Is there any others, someone here? Is there anyone?
I think the motion, the Village of Cleveland asked for it, and apparently the other people in Cleveland, I guess, before.
Well, I think there's just a concern that maybe it would be moved over to a coal or, you know, donated otherwise, so I think they want to make sure that it's known that they would like it when the time comes that if it is available, it can be available for them. So I think, you know, I think making decisions, and they can ask it if it becomes available, you know, pending that availability. I would say right now it's not available, given the pending appeal.
I would say that you also got to be clear in who's removing it, the responsibility when they take it, the whole harm agreement, and how it's going to be managed when it gets there, because there is safety inspections that have to occur, and I don't want the school to be responsible for the shape it's in, how it's removed, or how it's reset up. But, yeah, we need, we need to, like, I don't think that's clear in the letter, it's just a request order, it doesn't say that we're going to remove it on this date, and it's going to be taken out by this date, and who's going to do that, which is not our responsibility if who takes it out, but I don't want to be responsible for somebody getting injured or they couldn't call a car or conduct a client before, because I don't think that we are. I don't have a problem with it staying there, but the problems are the states are that much longer, and I don't know what kind of shape it gets in, because it's getting no maintenance. Yep. If the children of the community want it and they want to go to the school district and use it and go to the playground, they're amused, that's fine, but they believe the village wanted it to put into a playground so that the children could go to the playground. So I believe that's what the village asked for.
So it sounds to me like we want, you either want to table this or just withdraw the motions until you get a permanent answer from the Commissioner of Education. Is that what I'm hearing from people or not what I'm hearing from people? So shall we just table this motion for now then, until we get those answers? Is that what you're going to do?
I would pay to table it, I just don't want to be able to come back and say that we didn't want to give it to crackback to people.
Right, because that's, right, that's not legal.
All right, so I don't have the idea to motion to table this, is that what I need? Or I'll make the motion, that'll be tabled until we get further clarification. Any other discussion?
I did, I did want to discuss what I had emailed about in terms of there possibly being a committee or group of us to look at the situation with the middle school, so that maybe, the idea would be to have a sex group of people that are dedicated to working with the racetrack developers and being involved in that process in terms of kind of being the go-to people, if certainly if they have any questions or, you know, want to have a meeting, it's kind of predetermined who would be involved in that, and also who, you know, on our side of things would be kind of the representative in those kinds of negotiations. And also just to start to look at what, if this is something that we, you know, if it were to come to us and offer, if it were going forward, what would that require of the district? I feel like as much of that, that it's figured out ahead of time, done ahead of time, the easier it'll be to make a decision when it comes to the question. I did, I did get a hold of this K-6 redistricting study, that was from March, that kind of talks about some of the information, I guess, that I hadn't seen yet, and I'm not sure why this was never shared with the public, but it definitely talks about a time period for a middle school sale in construction time, it says three years, and I, when I think about, you know, what we've heard, that it'll be a good two years before the middle school would be on the table for a sale, I kind of feel like at this point that we're a year behind already. So that's a concern to me in terms of what needs to be done to make that sale happen. I was also concerned with some of the numbers in the study in terms of moving the students and different capacity numbers. For instance, right in here, I think redistrict for K-6 enrollment with redistricting, the figures here show, you know, four hundred and sixty-six students at CSI, and then, you know, from the Seversky study, only four hundred and thirteen students would be a hundred percent capacity, so, you know, anybody who made any kind of decision based on this, I hope you looked at the, you know, it certainly indicates that it wouldn't help things at Cleveland, but when you're putting all of the other schools over capacity, it just doesn't seem, well, I don't understand it, quite honestly. So I think it would be great if there was a group of people dedicated to looking at some of this stuff more in-depth so that we can have understanding of what needs to be done, what it would take for such a sale, and more, if it's something that we just need to forget about and move on, you know, in another direction, but it's very ambiguous and it's such a big deal, I think they can't just be ignored.
Back to the table motion, if there are cases to be voted, if you're all in favor of table, please table the motion. Thank you. Anything else for board forum?
I don't know what, how to go about this, can I make the motion to form a committee or is that how you do it? I mean, I said we could talk about this at the meeting, and right now I'm the only one talking myself.
Yeah, you can make the motion.
So I make the motion to form a committee to focus on the potential sale of the middle school.
Second motion. Okay, is there discussion in the motion? I mean, I'll start out, I mean, I think when you talk about negotiating with a potential buyer, regardless of who it is, I really think that that's the function of the administration to do that, and I don't believe that we need a committee to do that. Part of the research that we're going to do is to see, you know, what kind of money are we going to require, if that leads us to the past, what kind of money are we going to require to get out of that in order for us to upgrade, better fit, you know, if we choose to go Miller Hawke, for example, or something cheaper for the cost of, upgrade that, all the field associated with the building, gymnasium space, the labs, and So, you know, I really think that's information that's going to come from that.
From the administration.
Administration.
So we just need to keep that in part, don't we?
Well, I guess my biggest concern is that we live in a society that's so tedious and we have everybody who specializes and is licensed in certain things. If you're a attorney, you're licensed to be so, if you're a licensed practitioner, you'd be licensed to that, or a doctor, a pharmacist, a teacher, but yet in this particular case, we're dealing tens of millions of dollars, we're going to assume that yet just a couple of classes with CAS agree, prove readiness for the superintendent or administrators to be in a best position to negotiate or to even be in discussion and deliberation over such a huge, huge, multi-million dollar deal. What's my correct answer? Well, other profession, no other profession. Can you finish? Yeah, I'm sorry. No other profession would you take somebody who specializes in the area of curriculum development, education, and any concrete resolution with regards to union and negotiating pay, and basically say, "Well, okay, we're going to, we want you to negotiate our real estate." No, no other corporate entity that I've ever worked with would work in that way. You would, you would have things thought out ahead of time, you would put a group of people to do an impact study, you would involve other professionals so that you had a readiness to pass the hand, and I believe that's what Sarah is talking about, is rather than wait until the track may be ready, and we heard throughout everyone in the groups that was coming to the hearings, that we have two phases, you'd be remiss to think that this was only step one in closing Cleveland. So now it's been over three months. All I've seen is step one. I haven't seen anything with regards to step two. I've not seen anything addressed with regards to redistricting. We're looking at numbers where it will be over capacity in certain areas, what is step two? And if step two is the middle school, let's start looking at it. If step two is what the rumors were out there, which the board said they were just rumors with regards to Hastings, where are we in that process? Because it's August already. Well, you say it's August, but we know that the racetrack is probably at least two years away, and it's not, but we have the backs up against the wall at this point in time. I also think that you have to put some trust in the administrative team that we have, that they will make sure that the appropriate expertise is acquired or they have onboard to make sure that negotiations with the sale and the reinvestment of the money into our schools will be done in an appropriate and a wise manner. You know, I know, I know we have a lot of differences of opinion on the school board, you know, but if we're going to work together here and we're going to work together harmoniously, it's time we start putting some trust in each other, and we start working together, we get off the bandwagon where absolutely everything that gets done is going to be questioned because we don't think people are competent or capable of doing something. And, you know, it's getting to a point where it's not helping us to work together as a group, you know? I don't have to tell you what it's like, what the Oval Office becomes a school board member is, but, you know, it's, one is to support the decisions of the school, whether you disagree or not, and number two is to be in place for the children, and I think it's time that we start moving in that direction. I would love to see us move in that direction because there are a lot of things in our plate, and I think it's time that we move forward as a group.
Well, I'd just like to say to that last point about supporting the decisions of the school board, as soon as this board here supports the resolutions in 2012 to close CSI to students and close the district office and re-purpose, then we can talk about us supporting the resolution to close Cleveland, but there is an open resolution that none of you are supporting, and I think it's hypocritical to suggest that I need to come and publicly support a decision I don't support, and I don't believe was ethical. And when it comes to proving yourself in trust, this last decision with Cleveland was done in a rush decision. I learned today that the kindergarten classes are going to have twenty-four, twenty-four and twenty-three students in them, the district's class goal is twenty for kindergarten. We're talking four, four and three over, and that's if we don't get any more kids. And you might say, maybe we could add a section, but where would you put a section at A goal? There's absolutely dear word written on it. This is a concern, and the track record is not good, and this stuff pops up every single day. I have people coming to me with concerns about things that are happening with this transition that aren't working out. Miller Hawke's kindergarten classes are going to be seventeen, eighteen, we're working seventeen for all, facing to fourteen, and now on the North Shore, we have twenty-four kids in a kindergarten class. This is the result of the last decision. I'm sorry, but I don't trust that it's being done the right way. I don't. It's not legal.
I checked the enrollment this morning, and it was twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-one on SIS.
Twenty's the goal, so you're starting out over goal. If you start out over goal, where does that leave you, would you get more students?
Again, we have a plan in place and we will continue to track that.
Okay, what is the plan? Can you share that, please?
Yes, we always look at additional spaces, that's why, one of the reasons that we move life skills out of there, so that we have flexibility. Administrative team is telling me that there's flexibility in that building.
Like the art room? Is that what this administration told you, that they could make the art room a kindergarten classroom?
Quite possibly.
Okay, and so where will they have art?
The art and music could possibly share, they're out on different days.
And isn't it correct that the band is already sharing with the music room because there isn't a private lesson room like there was at Cleveland?
That I'll look into.
You had mentioned, you know, moving on in terms of the open, we've all addressed that, and the comment that was made about readiness is not, for the record, it's not because of anything of personal nature with regards towards a superintendent, it would be the same comment that would be towards any superintendent, that's just not what they go to school to do. And when you look, when you look at the middle school, it was one of the one buildings that we did not do evaluation on, because it was missed, I get it, and here's a cost, essentially, but if we're going to be going forward, those are the types of things that we want to get downfield on, we want to be ahead of in understanding what the value of our properties are, be a professional, so that we can make educated decisions and provide that leadership and provide that coaching to our administrative team. So it's not coming from a place of being a pet eater or argumentative, it's coming from a place of doing financial planning for a living, where you have to collect all the data, know the information, so that you can sit and deliberate over which way to go. That's where it is, and that is the responsibility of the board. It's not to take direction or emails and then respond back to a superintendent via email and say, "Hey, I think I like that," or "No, I don't like that," and then he gets presented on. It's supposed to be done here. He brings it up, he makes a recommendation to the board, I just heard earlier that he's recommended to the board the UPK. Now, no place was that recommended publicly, except just...
That's all was down.
That's right, it was in the Friday memo, what place to have deliberation under the open meeting laws is for that to take place at a public meeting. So making a recommendation to the board, as an example, I wasn't going to bring that up, but as an example, the superintendent can say to board members in correspondence, "I don't think it's a good idea to do this," or "I don't think it's a good idea to do that." Then you publicly say it at the meeting, as a recommendation. If a board member disagrees, that board member has the ability to make a motion, you have to have a second decree, just like what we do, the second then allows discussion over the recommendation, or the superintendent's opinion, because that's what it is. It's an opinion, until it's put into motion, then it becomes a leadership point because this board says so. But that has to be done publicly. You have to state it publicly, you have to second it publicly, you have to have, then you have discussion over it, and then the board can make a decision collaboratively, just to whether or not you want to go forward. It's about deliberation. Liberation cannot take place under the open meetings law any other place but here. If the superintendent does it one by one, or a couple of people, and Joe knows he won't do that because that's canvassing, so when the communication piece, the Friday memo, to your point, is used in such a way, not with his intent, but the reaction to the memo, not with his intent, I'm not questioning his intent, said board members then respond, it takes on the action of what would be canvassing, so then it doesn't make it to the table, doesn't get discussed publicly, and the board does or does not act because it doesn't get discussed publicly, that in its essence is leading the district as to where it will and will not go, and that is not how boards are supposed to function. That's not, that's not me looking for some high ground legal methodology around this, that's just the rules. That's highly illegal, that's the rules.
So to your point, then, you said you'd like to set up a committee to do this, you said that, um...
And I'd love to comment on it.
You'd like to comment on it, and it doesn't indicate, I mean, and your question was, we should be on that committee, that would be one of your questions as well, in your proposal.
Right. Um, I mean, that's...
Whether it, any of us, other than maybe the president of the board.
I'm sorry, what?
That doesn't mean that it should be any of us, other than maybe the president of the board.
That could mean that, absolutely.
So what was your comment in that column?
No, I, I just, getting back to, and I don't, just, some minor points here. The last meeting we were at, I was corrected by Mr. Munich about, I had mentioned that, you know, I believe the racetrack said that originally they were going to lease it or buy it from us and then lease it to SUNY, and if you correct me, he said they were buying it, or they weren't buying it though, that Alfred was buying it, correct? So why we would ever have another conversation with Racetrack about land purchasing doesn't make any sense to me, if they're not in the play. The only thing we would have a conversation with them about would be how the racetrack affects the middle school, and we've already done that with the environmental study, and our lawyers have expressed our problems with it. So basically, at this point, our comment period, along with everybody else, is over for the racetrack. There's, there's no more open meetings with the town, there's no comments, and if we're not negotiating with the racetrack for the school, which we were informed that we would have to do with Alfred. Now, Alfred, I, you know, I don't know if they're, not interested. I, I deal with the SUNY construction fund every day. I ask the people there about it, they have nothing, no comments, no, nothing has come across their desk, no radar, it hasn't even developed to that stage yet where they, I guess, thought about it. Maybe people who went all the way here thought, no, it hasn't come up to that height.
And I guess that's just my point, I feel like somebody should be tasked with finding out who do we ask those questions to, finding out what are our questions even? Maybe we even, like I said, need to ask the very first question, which would be, if it were offered, is that something the board would want to do?
In your initial statement, you were talking about dealing with the racetrack, because I don't see any need to deal with the racetrack.
Okay.
And until this comes up with somebody to negotiate with, it's kind of a new point. Now, we can get ahead of it or whatever, but I'm not interested in putting a committee together to negotiate outside. They can do whatever they want, but the problem is when you put, label committees and whatever, I like the idea of Joe or, and Dick getting together and talking to these people and bringing us back the information to us. I don't want to go to a big giant committee and have it all brought out, you know, we want to bring us the information back, we can make the decision here, but, you know, what's the difference? If you're, we're talking about a committee, it's going to be a committee made of this board, we're not going outside to negotiate a multimillion dollar grant application.
Well, and I didn't say just this board, I don't believe that I did, I think I suggested possibly people from the community, community leaders, whether it's community, what's we're, or letters, leader, I mean, people involved, basically, people with an investment in both the business side of it with the racetrack and the school, whatever it becomes, and people invested in the school district working together towards an end goal. And I don't just, I guess I'm not just referring to negotiations, but... And I don't just, I guess I'm not just referring to negotiations, but from the district's standpoint, what would it take, literally, what would it take for us to be able to do it? Because how can we say yes or no if we don't know what it will take to make it happen? I mean, in a way, you're not going to, you're not going to like me saying this, but that's what I feel like is happening with Cleveland. The decision was made without any, certainly not any public discussion of what it would actually take to make that consolidation happen. Okay? Things like the parking lot, things like the evacuation center, and places for them to go, and none of this stuff was decided ahead of time, what it would take.
Andy, you're too, you're positioning, and I think I understand you're saying, hey, why, we don't even have a real buyer yet, right? We don't even have, we don't even know who or who was on it.
There may be somebody there.
I agree, I agree with that point. However, if that's the methodology that we're going by and making the decision, that's the methodology that we're using and saying whether we should talk about it or not talk about it.
We're talking about it now?
I know, but...
Why not have this part open in the public? Why can't we have this discussion right now?
Yeah. I agree. I agree with that, but the planning element, at least where I'm at, is we didn't have a, we didn't have a buyer for Cleveland and the board still moved forward, right?
Yep.
Which you can't really have a buyer ahead of time, you're not supposed to do it that way, which is good.
Correct.
So now, you know, we heard there's going to be a phase two, there's going to be a phase two, there might even be a phase three, but we've got to do something. So what's, so now, we're on, now we're talking about this. What is phase two? What is phase three? Because we heard about it all along that it's there, and look back, I don't see any of it, I don't see it in the presentations, I really, you know, I don't, I don't, it's not to be argumentative, it's to truly say, where are we going with this?
We have a motion, Dick, excuse me, we have a motion to form a committee, we have a second. Will we vote on it?
Are you calling a question? Are you calling the question? Is that what you're doing? You call the question, then we have to vote.
Yes.
Okay, the question's been called. Sarah, just so we're clear, could you repeat what your motion is?
Make a motion to form a committee of board members and community members to look at and address the selling of the middle school and what that would require.
Okay. All in favor, simple vote, signify please by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion to the floor. Do we have any other items for the board forum?
I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee to discuss what phase two is with regards to redistricting and building closure. I honestly don't. We have a redistrict, we were said we're going to redistrict, we have a redistrict, we're told we have extra voting.
This is a committee, we're not just talking about it.
We were just talking about it, but what happened was it got called, but part procedure, we were talking about it, you're correct, and I was, I bought into that, let's just talk about it, because what Andy said, and then it was brought to a stop by calling for a vote. So I'm putting this back out there, now somebody has to second what I said, so that we can have discussion about it, as long as until somebody at this board says, no, I don't want to talk about this anymore, and calls for a vote. That's what just happened. Robert's rules. That's what just happened. We were talking about it, to your point, and we got shut down. So I'd like to make a motion that we talk about what redistricting will look like as we move forward.
Discussion?
This is, this is in my mind, and it's my personal speak only, so here's the thing. We closed the school, we know that phase two, I shouldn't say the number, it is my understanding that my thoughts were that phase two would be either having the racetrack move forward so that we have an initiative to move forward on it, or in conjunction, that was one thing, or we would potentially have to redistrict and close out our elementary school because our district is consolidated. What we do know is that right now, the racetrack is at least two years out. We don't have a buyer, we don't know what the value of our building is, we don't even know what our selling price would be. I'm not even sure that that's something that we should even go down at this point, because we're going to make a decision for three years out and possibly not have a reason to do it. We don't know what the state's going to say, because they may very well say, you have plenty of space in this district, you can rebuild and you can capitalize and do whatever you want to, but we're giving you no money for it. They may come back and say, you can't sell the middle school for what you believe you owe on it, you're actually going to get our investment back on it. So I think there's so many unknowns that aren't even, just stop, that aren't even known like as far as factual. They are unknown with the state, which we have no ability to get that information. The answer from the state has been, the answer from the state has been, we'll let you know.
And who talks to the state?
Joe talks to the state, Maureen talks to the state. Do we have anything concrete at this point? We have nothing from them that says, you can consolidate, you can do any, well, we can consolidate because it's a wall, we can do that. But we have nothing from the state that says, if you sold that building, I'd give you the following amount of money. Because why, why would they do that? Why are they going to commit themselves or the tax payers?
Do we even know how much money they would want them to give us?
How, why would we, how do we know that? We want just what we owe.
I know, but how would we know that if no one's looking at it and no one's studying it?
Well, how would we know if we don't have an offer on it? I mean, that's, that's the point of the job interview is saying, I'll take this much money, but I really would like, but they're willing to offer you more for it. Why would you even put a figure out there? Why would you even entertain like saying?
Well, my argument is, you can move all the kids out of the middle school and let it sit there, because apparently we won't lose building aid, and then we can do whatever we want with the rest of the building.
I'm not a hundred percent, can you please, do we get our complete aid, or we get partial aid?
Aid continues to run if we're any longer. Fully.
Building aid.
Building aid, which is not student aid.
Right. They're still getting...
Correct, which is a clarification, that is not student.
Student aid is based on how many students you have, and that's not...
Students in a building, not students in the district.
But if they move to another building, you'll get credit for them in that building.
You'll only get credit for them in that building, but you're going to...
Then it would disappear.
You're not going to get the same amount of money that you were getting when you had them in that one building that you weren't even fully capacitized and using.
All right, really, why? You get a different amount of money based on what stills you have.
Okay, Maureen, how much do the kids in the middle school, with kids in it?
The old aid is being provided by the capital cost and the debt to conserve projects is called building aid, and that will run if you develop a building. The other aids at this point that have proven, as that is, you can write autographs, so if you call the close zone, or if you are in a combination aid, or whatever, that changes the five years that you can make decisions on it, so the code would be changed.
So our state aid would not change?
State aid is not necessarily making this cause of building.
Until it's...
State aid is not a building.
Until it's closed or until it's sold? Okay, you just said closed, so that's okay, just wanted to be clear. So if we own the middle school and we have no students in there, our revenue is not going to change. Okay, so...
I'm still not in favor of moving all the kids to someplace else. Where are you going to put them? Are you going to move to another building?
No, I think your point though, Trina, is that in the deliberations that were had before, under the, what's called a stressful situation with us, it was difficult, or had a difficult decision to make. Part of that public dialogue, it's on the record, there's information that wasn't accurate. So, so people's understanding of whether or not they were in favor of where the board was going was based on information and dialogue with this very board that wasn't accurate information. We know that now because we're getting more clarification right now. So the point is moving forward with all of us before you have to, is so that our readiness to make such a difficult decision is where it needs to be, so that we're making that decision collectively.
Okay, well, let's go down the path. Okay, so, so let's go, let's go down the path that we're going to move all the kids out of the middle school and we're going to keep getting our aid.
Now we've got to have a place to stick them.
Well, actually, you know, according to this, you can see, if you just moved just the sixth graders out and redistricted, you would have saved 1.3 million dollars this year. All you had to do was move the sixth graders.
That's not accurate, because you know what? That'd be awful. Where are you going to put all these staff? And that's why that document was not used, okay? It was not put out there. The only reason why you...
But it was given to you. And you're the one who makes the decision.
I, you said to make my decision.
From my perspective, you're getting information that's not accurate to make a decision.
No, I'm getting information. I get plenty of information. I can make decisions. I don't necessarily have to make all my decisions based on this information that I get. I'm capable of looking at multiple pieces of information and making a decision. You're saying that I made a decision based on that document, and I'm telling you right now, I did not. So what I'm saying to you is, you want to have a Plan A and a Plan B, you want to go down this path and you want to be all concise and everything in place. We can do that. It doesn't mean that any one of them are going to come to fruition or happen, because the reality is, it comes down to what the state says we can do and what we can afford, and that's what it is.
It didn't, the state didn't say, the state has yet to say anything about Cleveland, but the point in this, and we've just proven it here, is that what we thought was aidable and what we thought is not aidable was at best confusing. And, and we just proved, these are the same questions that we've been asked, and if we were to have tests, if each board member were to, were to be tested on what is aidable and what is not aidable, we, there would probably be struggle, I'll raise my hand, I'll admit, and I've been at this a long time, and it's still damn well confusing. And if you sit and listen to Maureen who does it, and every year it somewhat changes, it's confusing. The only point I'm making is, is that there's a high likelihood that the decision that the board made was not in 100% understanding of how Eve works, was not 100% in understanding about what all of our buildings were worth, was not 100% understanding about whether redistricting would truly be taken care of or not. And in part, what you said, you don't necessarily know the future, but you deal with probabilities. When we do Monte Carlo analysis at work, we say, hey, it's probable to a 70% certainty, this is going to happen, and then you move forward, but it's a collecting of this data, and the board moved quickly, and now we're finding out some of the data that's necessarily accurate. When we look and we say, we don't know what the middle school is worth, well, how do we not know what the middle school is worth? We just had a bunch of people come in and value our schools. One more in the mix doesn't skew, doesn't throw your costs for having evaluations on a building evaluation. What would it cost us that much more to value that building so that we know? That's all. It's just, unless everyone on this board likes the way the road Cleveland closes, and I'm not, put my opinion out as to whether or not it was the right decision or not, I've already done that. I'm moving forward. And what I'm saying moving forward is, do we want to do it the same way? I don't, I don't, I pray it's not within the next two years that I have, that I have to do it again, if it's going to be done that way. But if we're going to actually collect data and bring in professionals and get ahead of this before we have to, that makes sense. You're saying you don't know what the building needs to look like? Nope, we never do. You don't know, you don't know whether gap elimination is going to go away. Nope, we never do. We don't know whether we're going to continue on with common core or not, right? I'm hearing two resolutions that are going to be put on the floor today, voted, have voted on. I was against them both three years ago. Only one, only one. So I'm in agreement, but we got to collect the data now, not when you absolutely need to, and hit the fan, and we're like, oh, we don't have enough money to stay, to stay solid. That's not how you run a business. I get you're going to say, well, Susan's corporate, I know, I said that to you on the phone when you decided you were thinking about running. It's not a corporation. So we should get out of front of it. That's all.
So I think we push down the information that you want, and you have the administration work on getting it. Actually, question, the board seems to have a lot of insight of what needs to be done and what could be done, and we just haven't had a input. But as a committee? This is the committee. You want to have this discussion every single time? Have it right here.
Just, what, what phase is this? Are, do we have readiness to do building evaluation? I was told we don't.
No, but my point to you is that if there's things that you want to have done, if you'd like to have building readiness evaluation, you need to put that request in. The board has to agree that we're going to move forward to do that. We have to then say, Maureen, would you set up to have board readiness evaluation? Does the board agree that we should do that? We move forward with that. We come back to the next meeting, and it doesn't go that quickly, it takes a couple meetings, and we come back and we have one more evaluation.
Well, what, we, didn't we already do this? Because there's a plan, there's a second step. You said at the meetings, that there's, you'd be, you missed the thing, I think that's a goal, you missed the thing that we don't have a second step to this. And you started, you gave a 20,000 foot view of it, there's now...
And that is the second step. So the closed school, we consolidate more, or wait for the racetrack?
That's it.
So this step is wait and see.
That's my step, but I don't know what you guys' step, I mean, you don't have that step.
You said, no, you said Menard had a phase two, that's what I'm trying to, do we have a phase two? Is there anything that's been looked on this so far?
What we were looking at after the Dr. Zaburski report, then during that, that process, the possible sale of the middle school with Racetrack being interested in it, and that is why we consolidated the North Shore at this time, and then looking to see what is going to take place with the racetrack. That was, that's what we had decided, and that we needed to further consolidate, but it would be fiscally irresponsible not knowing what could happen with the middle school.
Joe, so if you did, if you went down the road with the middle school, what were the preliminary numbers on capital, clearly that's where that would go, right? What buildings were, were to be added on to? Because I know what you're thinking, I know you've already had these discussions on the field.
We've talked, we've talked about that, we've asked the architects to give us a ballpark figure on what would need, what would be needed as far as Miller-Hawke and CSI.
So there, that's 13, because I know I heard the number, you said, hey, it's going to cost, you said 55 or 50 million or something?
I like it, it's 30. It's something.
Okay.
38 comes to my mind.
All right, 36 to 38, and what, what are you spitballing around where that money has to be spent? Miller, what else?
Miller-Hawke and CSI at this time.
CSI. So then that could end up leading us more towards what you're thinking is, apart normalized, you have Brewerton, you have Brewerton, you have Miller-Hawke and CSI, well, the one we take down in the role of the, of the middle school, not a junior high, the middle school, right?
That's correct.
And then you're thinking about the old elementary school, that becoming a, one that's large enough to handle the older folks from West Monroe, because not all West Monroe, what it does at all is have to go to north, you're going to have to come back, and you would be moving away with Hastings. Did you not put money in Hastings? I didn't hear you say you were going to put money in Hastings.
No, that would, that would be keeping Hastings.
Keeping Hastings, but not in towards Hastings.
Well, all of our buildings need to be, at, at some point, need to be renovated to protect our investment. Yes.
So Brewerton, so you would increase the size of Brewerton to be able to handle all Brewers and Popper, is that what you're thinking?
Not at this time.
No, just saying, we're not the case of, like, the board.
I'm saying, when you, if you went to a large capital project with 36 million, wouldn't there be an increase in size, it would just be you update the facility, is that what you're saying?
What we looked at is, we looked at the closure of the middle school, making Miller-Hawke the junior high school, all right, and then also, we would need to add on at CSI and do renovations. Now, with a full capital project for the entire district, that may very well be true, that, that we may be recommending an addition at Brewerton, but not at this time. We didn't look at that at this time, we just looked at the closure of the middle school ballpark.
Kind of what I'm getting at is, and quicker now at the table, you're going to do improvements to Brewerton to not include, logically, that's where we're going to see a large state increase in population, right?
Correct.
That's what most of the people, Democrats would say. Why would you not start to plan what addition on Brewerton would look like?
We should.
All right. So realistically, we will probably even more than the 36, potentially look at Miller, that move, CSI, and most likely, we're going to go in the direction of a campus type piece, which is what you're setting up for now. Why would you not look in an addition on CSI then?
We would be.
Yes, yeah, we did say.
So the addition on CSI, and so couldn't you make that big enough that, I mean, so you're basically saying we're definitely going to keep, we're definitely going to keep Hastings?
Not, not definitely. Not, we don't know what's going on with the middle school. Once we know what's going on with the middle school.
Well, doesn't it kind of stand to reason that the further you go into this process of closing schools, the more you're going to have to spend on additions if you find out that you tend to sell the middle school? It's kind of, I mean, if you take away capacity and then find out you need it, well, then you don't have it anymore, so you're going to have to add on. I mean, just, you know, contemplating adding on to CSI is a result of losing the capacity at Cleveland, correct?
No, it'd be because of the middle school.
But if you had Cleveland still open, you wouldn't need to add on to CSI, like, once you closed the middle school?
We'd be pushing people out.
Yeah. Then what's the problem with that?
I'm also hearing the children are being like, some twice. As he currently goes to AAIC, he's in vice stills class. You're upwardly, he knows from a daily basis, all his friends, his daily machine, you're upwardly going to take them to Hastings. And I just heard that you're talking about moving to Gant. Are you going to close?
No, no.
I have not heard that.
No.
Well, if you're going to close Hastings, what you just said was one of the potential outcomes for phase two. If you close Hastings, then that program will move again.
If you really want to be a technicality, if you're closing the middle one, if you really want to be a technicality, you could keep the middle school, move every elementary to the middle school, put the middle school back at Miller-Hawke, if you wanted to. Make sixth grade CSI.
Let's invite some spirits to the event.
Sell it. Understand, totally, and get to the hall, whatever it feels like you're putting up there.
Well, Hastings was one of them. I mean, Joe was the one who brought it. One of the meetings, let's say four meetings, or whatever, Hastings was the one that we brought up publicly. We may have the case, we did say that publicly. I, then you were, we said, that's what people were thinking. So, so with Hastings, this track, this track thing's not great at all. Absolutely what Andy's saying is that there's a high likelihood that this may not happen. It may not happen, let me, let me rephrase. You've not heard anything concerning, and they haven't told you whether they're looking to do anything, that wouldn't surprise me.
That's probably not on my list.
I understand. You're, you're not on their favor. I get it, I understand. They're probably barely talking to the governor about it. What I'm getting at is, the, the middle school being purchased, according to you and the developer, according to what the developer said to you, Joe, is so far out, they're already moving forward with their secret plans without that, without that property and that, okay? Understanding how that works, the reason that they're doing that in part is because in their mind, and what I've heard from investors, is that they didn't feel that we had a realistic price tag, you know, you didn't give them a price tag, there's more range of what it would cost, and saving up, I don't believe that should go on the tax payer. So we gave a pretty big number. And they thought, they would have hard times getting investors to work with that. So they're, what they look forward and plan to not exclude middle school property or the middle school, as a result, and believe that was valuable to investors. What I am still saying is, we should know what the value of all of our buildings are, so that when we sit and talk with those set people who are thinking about being buying, and then pitching their investment, that they would have a realistic number, or a number that's closer to being true, so that then they know whether or not that's something they want to go into the public. That's a, that's a feeling feel when you're putting this in. It's not selling your house. I think it's fine, we can, we can find out the value of that building. But regardless of what the value is determined to be, you know, I think our responsibility is to receive enough payment for that, for that piece of property that will cover any capital improvement cost that we need to do to move kids, for example, we know that the primary building does not have anywhere near the setup that would be required for something creative. Science labs, size of classrooms, gymnasium spaces, and, you know, I don't know, you know, music rooms, art rooms, it just doesn't have it. So you're, in my mind, regardless of what the value of that middle school is, we're going to have to garner X number of dollars on it, X number of dollars from it in order to cover any cost, the capital improvement project to relocate all those students, and to relocate students from the Miller-Hawke is the choice for, you know, the middle school, or something creative, or whatever it is, to do that. And, you know, part of the, another part of that whole conjecture is, and it's been brought up here before, we don't know. The state paid us 90% of building at middle school. Are they going to turn around and say to us, okay, you're going to sell that, relocate, we're going to give you 90% for all that consolidation? Or are they going to say, no, we already paid for that, you've got space, we're not going to pay for that? And then now, that means we need to change the selling price. I mean, and. Part of that tick, though, is part, part of this is a windfall, it would be a windfall sale. Meaning that when this board looked and talked about this over the last decade, and we've been talking about it over the last decade, about the decision, then just about 10 years, right? Then I got on board, we talked about it again. And we talked about capital improvements, and we didn't put a roof on this one, because we had to put a roof on this one, and we didn't put computers in that one, because we had to put plumbing in this one, and we've always dropped here, pay fall. So this is a windfall, this would be a windfall sale. It would be incredibly weak to think that all of this can be done on the backs of all the potential investor, because if you do so, you'll watch your possible windfall sale say bye-bye. Because if you sit back and think, oh, this is smart, we should be realistic and say, hey, if we can get a certain amount out of these folks to maintain their interest, so that they have a plausible syndicate to go out and get investors for it, that's realistic. But to think, oh my God, is there a chance? Let's just handle every possible thing we can. We lose the, and I suspect that they got full feet with 50-some thousand dollar purchase for us, because we didn't give them a purchase price, because we didn't do a building evaluation. But.
Well, I'm not suggesting an exploit shaker man, but we try to nail the people very sadly. What I'm saying is, we know, don't have the information, not so much about, you know, a top and a project ballpark of what it might take to do all this, but, you know, that, what we would need to get out of that building, based on what kind of state aid we can get out of capital projects, is a significant difference. Significant difference. And then we have to also then look and see, you know, because we are responsible not only for the kids here, but for the taxpayer.
You got to do it both. You got to do it as if it's solid, and do it as if it doesn't solve. It's the same work that you're being asked to do 10 years ago. Eight years ago, six years ago, four years ago. It's the same work. We have to move forward as if it's not going to solve. You can't just, you can't just sit and wait. This board said to the public, we can't just sit and wait on, on, on Cleveland, because we don't know how long the track is going to go. And I'm saying the same thing right back at this board that I'm now a part of. We can't just sit and wait and see what's going to happen with the track. We've got to actually be ready to make intelligent decisions. We're never going to know, as I say. She never knows her year, that's why she does what she does. She has to figure that out. But the other part, a lot of it is for us. Not only does it.
And I do question, you know, what do you say when, when they want to buy it? What is their timeframe? I mean, okay, they don't want to buy it for two years. Whoever wants to buy it? Somebody comes to us in two years and wants to buy it. Are they going to be, okay, well, they're saying, okay, we'll get back to you in three years, and we've got to do all this now? You know, how much can we, how far down the road can we get so that we're ready, so that if someone wants to buy it and we want to sell it, that comes together as close as possible? Because I could see them saying, we can't wait three years, or we can't wait two years, or if you're, if you're going to do this deal, we need to do it next year, and we're going to have kids in, you know, on campers, on campus, because we don't have anywhere to put them while we're in transition and in flux. I mean, I could see us having to turn down a sale, because we are structured, our infrastructure, infrastructure isn't ready to accommodate those other students, because we haven't had a plan. I mean, it's such a big, underdign thing, that, you know, as much as we can be prepared for at any time, the smoother it could potentially go, and I would hate to see a lack of planning make it not happen at all, unless it's not something that we want. I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should pass a resolution that it is this board's desire to sell the middle school if the opportunity arises, so that we're all at least working towards the same goal. I mean, maybe we need to come up with a plan as a group as to what our desire for the middle school is. I mean, maybe half of you are sitting here thinking, there's no way I can sell that or sell the middle school. And I, and I'm wasting my breath. I don't know. I mean, is that something that we want? Should we come together and at least decide that we want to, you know, move forward as much as we can?
I'll speak for myself, but I think it's a general consensus here that we will, as a board, we'll move forward, whatever the need is best for the kids in the district. And at the same time, we have to balance, you know, costs of taxpayer. I mean, there has to be, you know, that's a hard part of this job, you know? Like, all I had to worry about were the kids. That would make this job very simple. Okay? So I don't think that we need a resolution to do something like that. I also think that, you know, I believe, and Mr. Menard, he flipped correctly from long ago, you're, I mean, it's not like we're just sitting waiting for something to happen. He's just sitting there waiting for something to happen. I mean, we're, we're doing, I'm suing, you're doing, and maybe you can, maybe more explicit about it. You're are looking at what needs to happen, and if this whole process could have gone. That's correct, and we've been in contact with our attorneys on this, and contact, I called Eddie Ritchie's office again today to see if we could get additional information on the suing part, waiting for a phone call back. We are not just standing, standing still. It's so unclear. From the very beginning, the racetrack and the middle school were two different entities. They were never part of the heart system, and people attying the middle school to the racetrack. It was never, at least what I've heard in public meetings, their intent to have the middle school as part of the racetrack. Fair statement?
But I think there was some confusion. For instance, since the meeting in April, I believe it was, where you had spoke with Mr. Donnelly, and the vote got put off, you know, I mean, there definitely, I mean, it wasn't just the public that was, you know, spreading rumors or whatnot. I mean, that was taking place here amongst the board, and as well, you know, even to the last couple of weeks, meeting with the racetrack people. I mean, it does seem like maybe we've all been in error all this time, or something has changed, because they definitely weren't partnered together, the idea.
I believe Mr. Donnelly did, was hoping that that was going to happen, the racetrack would come first, and then he would have suing Alfred come in, and they would be doing all the programs that would coincide with the racetrack, like the husbandry, the mechanic part, the restaurant.
It was all part of the big plan, but the actual purchase would not have been him and his group.
Right.
Initial rendering, which they've already got approved on state, my understanding, they've already got approved on state, so you will take that off-ramp portion, if they sell it, if they can get the land adjacent, it's all part of what they want, is what I'm getting. Yes, they have to start with a piece, a small piece, but that's not really what they want. They really want to have it offered. They really want the land that's right in front of the school. So I would agree, I agree with you, Mr. Menard, that they don't really care too much about the building, and they have to suck. If they were to lease it out, great, if they were to buy investors, buy it, and then lease out, they were fine with that. Or the third was to get sued. They didn't care which it's free, because they really just want the land. That's my understanding. Am I correct in that? You know more than.
Well, I think you're putting words in their mouth, then.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not putting it in their mouth. I, what I'm stating is what I've heard from those that are connected to the investors, that they wanted to, they want their project to go more smoothly, and that is, they don't care about the building as much as they do the land off the land.
If the land's not anything to do with, we don't own the land back, it's the state that we get off of. If the rest area, if the rest area and their property connect, there's no school property in between?
At, yes, at the, at the, at the south end, at the other, as you look at the rest side.
The school, they connect directly to the rest area. They don't need our property to connect those two.
Right, it's adjacent. Both properties are adjacent to the rest area.
They can drive through the never going school route.
Agreed.
They don't need the school route.
Both properties touch the rest area. Is that true?
That's true. That's all. They don't need the school property at all to get their.
They want.
That's very well maybe, they may want, but they don't need. I have a lot of things I.
Right, but you're not a big fan of that. Neither am I, I'm very, that's, that's, so this is a Trump-like development, not of the modern addition project. This is a little different scenario, and their bigger vision is to get as much of the property and these lands they have as they can, so that they can get more investors to sign on to this whole project. They're not wanting to do little pieces. They're being forced to do that. That's what I'm getting. I wish that we could have been more aggressive in our marketing of our building. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, is motion on the floor? Is there anything else we need to discuss?
I guess a few more of them. We don't, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay? Do you have a second? Julian Dianna, reports to the Board of Education. Mr. Menard?
The purpose of this presentation is just to involve the board in a collaborative discussion, looking at the three-year district vision statements. Over the past two years, we handed out district goals to the board. We've had very little discussion on them, and the, the purpose of today is to look at these vision statements, which are very, very similar to the statements that we had before. One is, is directly related to instruction. The second vision statement is directly related to character ed, and the third one is fiscal responsibilities. Our goal is, hopefully, to get these approved tonight. We will then take them to our administrative team, who will then develop action plans that are going to address these vision statements, and then also have measurable goals tied to that. The way that they will accomplish this is they will take their administrator, the administrators will take them to their building level teams and develop, and, and as I said, an action plan associated with this. Again, it's a three-year district vision, and it's a commitment to educational excellence, ensuring Central Square graduates are career and college ready. Now, we know that, that the aspirational performance measurement by the state says that a student, in order to, to be career and college ready, has to have a 75 on the English regions and an 80 on any math regions. However, that, in our mind, is not really what is career and college ready. It's all about the skills that are needed in order to, in order to achieve those, those grades. I think the partnership for 21st century skills has a, has a pretty decent explanation or, or, you know, on what career and college ready is. Helping students to achieve cognitive, academic, emotional, and physical competencies they need to succeed in the 21st century life. First vision, increase instructional engagement in our schools. Now, what does that, what does that really mean? Increase instructional engagement? I saw a great, a great quote in an article recently, and it said, tell me and I forget. Show me and I remember. Involve me and I understand. Our professional development committee, which is made up of teachers and administrators, has really moved in a focus in instructional engagement. Scott, I know you and I have talked many times about project-based learning. So this is, this is one of the visions that, that we would like the, the board to, to adopt. Collaboration, creativity, communication, information, technology, all with increased instructional engagement in our schools. And I don't know if the board has any, any questions or any thoughts on this.
How, how do we do this when teachers are being forced? I'm not saying there aren't some elements of common core that, that positive people figure out a way to be positive, positive about the children, or they do. But it's almost like we're sending them in, and aren't trying to send them back, because they've got to learn this new common core stuff, they've got to implement this common core stuff, and they're not able to be nearly as creative as they are with project-based learning or what would be called portfolio-based learning. How are we going to do that? Are we going to loosen up the reins a little bit as it continues?
We, we have, to a certain degree, and the teachers have worked extremely hard on this. That was my main concern, is are we adding? That was my main concern, is are we adding extra? I don't want to add an extra to the, to the teachers. But it's my understanding through the professional development committee that, that currently, teachers are already doing this. Our second vision, supportive atmosphere that promotes twenty-first century citizenship at all levels. Now, this all already adds our character ed piece. We're still going to have the volunteerism, we're still going to have integrity and character. But also, what we're talking about here is an increased interaction with communication, basically, also via the internet. We all know that emails and Facebook and probably some contraption that's going to be invented tomorrow, that, that's going to have students interact. I think we owe it to our students to be sure that, that we teach them how they can handle these skills. And, uh, again, focusing on life and career skills, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, information technology. Any thoughts here?
It's, uh, schools that are leading an upper quartile in this particular area are making huge investments in their technology. iPads, laptops, lab-based laptops for, for each one of the rooms. Integration of using smartphones. We can, we know, I mean, you still have policies, our kid, because it is. We're going to have a lot of these smartphones. You know, what's a, what is it away, put it away, it's slow. Stay in the way during the day, or something like that, with, with, uh, smartphones. And interestingly enough, most of these kids have processing capabilities with these smartphones, but far surpass most of the stuff that we had this conversation. Most of the computers that we have within the building. So, how, to me, it's, again, we don't have the money for that type of thing, but this speaks directly to this. How do we embrace those kids that already have those smartphones and then, uh, allow smart pads or, or something along that? iPads for those kids that don't have it, so the teachers can use that stuff within the classroom in, in real time? Because if we're, we're struggling in this area, our stuff is slow, it's jammed up, our filters, and inject, this is all stuff we know. And I know you have a wish list, but, and it's a mile long in this board, we don't have the money to give you. But how do we, how do we cross over that, uh, and create better hotspots, more Wi-Fi, uh, stronger, uh, stronger technology use with kids that already have smartphones?
We could allow that in place, and we can continue to, I guess, with the smaller that we have, it's just a little bit of a time. So, we are looking at that, which is not in the commission of that.
It quite possibly will look at updating our policies so we can, we can engage students that way.
I also would like to point out, I think, in our district, especially the size of the district and how rural some of the areas are, it's important to remember that, that not all the kids can go home and have access to the same things that other kids have. And then, there needs to be a balance in terms of what's expected, um, within the school day is fine, but then when they go home, then maybe they don't have those resources. And then it's important for teachers to keep in mind that, that not all the kids do have a smartphone. And even if they do, it may not work at home like mine, because I live out in the woods. So, um, I think it's not to diminish our hornet, it's but to make sure that it isn't causing hardships either in the lives of some of these, these teens who just don't have that access at home.
Excellent.
But I think you also have to have a, it's, it's a policy. I mean, I just read an article, um, recently about public schools and using internet access and giving kids access to this kind of thing. I know even at my own organization, we struggle with all or nothing capability. So, if I say that you can't have Facebook, but you can, I don't have the VPN or the portable network to say that I can exclude you from doing that, when I want them to use smartphone technology. So, therefore, you're kind of limited to what you can actually let kids get access to. And I know that you like, I mean, this building right there, I can't get Facebook, like, it's locked down. Which I don't think is a bad thing, because kids need to concentrate on learning and not so much on whether smartphone. But I get being able to use the technology to its full extent is going to be a benefit to the staff and to the students. But, um, the policy language, if policy is hard, it's hard to enforce, and it's hard to keep kids from being on what they're supposed to be and where they're not supposed to be. I don't know how you do that, I don't know.
Well, there are, there are model schools that, that, that have been creating policies to limit it. They've empowered the students to use it, and they've found that they're staying focused on it. And they're using, uh, they're using the software that's on their phones, and they're going to the sites that are there. And they're teaching the professionals, they're empowering teachers to be able to integrate it within the classroom, to Sarah's point, so that a lot of that stuff can be done during the course of the day. So, they're kind of moderating how that is. And a lot of the, a lot of the common course stuff on the secondary level is, uh, is designed to be tied into the use of computer modeling and, and having instantaneous information. And in, you know, if you ask the name of a song, what's your kid do? You give them three lyrics, and what do they do? They got it. Or you say, like, it used to be my dad would be asking me about a date or a fact or something, and I'd have to check it later. But now, when you say something, the kids are, no, it's not that, it's this.
And I think that'd be fantastic if they were all using it for that.
Right, but these schools that are best in class and learning this are, rather than taking this approach away during the day, they're basically saying, if they do that, I've got to monitor how it's going to be done, and I've got to become a drill surgeon about protecting it. And then that pulls me away from covering for whom, because I've got to go discipline and behavior correction and all that stuff. The, the, the professionals who integrated it as part of their, um, part of their instructional, uh, process, now those kids are, are on it, and they're with them, and they're figuring out how to, how to, uh, to keep them with it. Whether it's even, what's Jack, what's that stuff that I want to be using at work where you sample it? You press the button on your phone. Like, we have speakers come in, and we're on our smartphones, and he starts talking, and everything starts popping up right on our smartphone.
Yeah, and we have different applications that act like a response unit.
On your phone.
On your phone.
Not, not those...
I was talking to an English teacher today, Sarah Jovan, about doing that very thing. So, that's stuff we can do. But to your point, um, we need an infrastructure that can support that much traffic. And so, if we are going to open the doors so that students can do those things on there, they're also going to be doing some things that we would not want them to do, that would take away from the bandwidth. We know they will. Um, and maybe that's okay, they're doing research in their own way. But we have to be able to make sure we have enough bandwidth so that way, and infrastructure. So, that way, when the teacher's getting ready to show a video from YouTube, that it's still there. The bandwidth has not been taken away by all the students who are, you know, doing things that are not playing for instruction. Um, so that's why, honestly, why we have a filter right now, uh, to keep the bandwidth down. Why we don't have students having access currently, because we don't have the bandwidth of the infrastructure. If we can invest more in that, we can open that door a little bit wider. Um, so, it's a little bit of a catch for me, too.
Well, when professionals finally take time out of their summer to go build this methodology for instruction, or they go to projects during their downtime or after school, and they come back into the building, you've done your lesson plan around that, and it doesn't work, Jack. You, you don't have to do that too many times before that professional says, "I can't keep doing this." Because now I got to have plans that are running Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. And that's real, that's hap- the technology is not making you wrong. We have to give you what you need, because this, this school, this is not a personal thing for us, administrator or any of the professionals, but we are lacking in what we're offering from support with our technology. It's not, it's, we just got to find more money, more grants or something, because we're way behind. And this whole, whether you're for it or against it, it's definitely technology-based. Is that, are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Common Core is technology-based, so if you don't have the technology to support that, now you're taking something that a lot of teachers don't want to do to begin with, and trying to make them do it, uh, in a way that's, you know, twenty-five percent of what it really is supposed to be. What type of money are we going to need to address that piece? Because that, I've heard that for a number of years, Jack, when you have five plus. What do we need? Seriously, how much money do we need to fix this we don't have enough bandwidth?
A few years ago, we evaluated, or tried to give you an estimate on what that was, and if I recall, probably two or three years ago, there was the board, so we looked at about twelve million dollars to get caught up. And at that point, then we would have to reinvest, I think it was two and a half million every year to keep, within like a four to five-year technology. Now, we just generally call it technology, because today it's desktops and it's moving towards tablets, towards hybrid devices. We don't know what the technology is, but nevertheless, the technology needs to be funded. And so, at that point in time, it was twelve million to get caught up, and then something in the order of two million to keep it.
But what we do know is this, we don't know whether it's going to be tablets, laptops, the district made a decision, I think, and I was against it, uh, desktops. I get it, so you have desktops, laptops, tablets, and it's phones. What, the one thing the Common denominator owns all of those is network. So, what is the network about? Forget the, forget all of the, the, what's the word, but the points of accessing the network. Forget about that for right now. What is it going to cost us for the network?
Well, I'm going to have to go back and put that kind of together. I mean, we've made some substantial investments this year and last year towards our network, over there now, but, um, I would think that number would not be that huge.
What about polling? What percent of our students are, have smartphones? What percent of our students are, have iPads? Our teachers, students, and so to them, we at least know.
The number's high, but like Sarah said, it's not one hundred percent for sure. Uh, and it never will be, and we can't let that hold us back that way.
I, I got it, but instead of, instead of coming up with a number that would be for one hundred percent of the students, we'd be coming up with a number that would be supplementing when they walk into the classroom. If fifteen of the kids have smartphones, or ten out of twenty, and I bet that at the secondary level would be probably low. But let's just say it were. Instead of, instead of you budgeting for twenty, you're only budgeting for ten. And, or, or if you leave them in the class, you're only, you're now only looking to add ten or fifteen tablets to every teacher in the building, in each building, at the secondary level, as opposed to saying, we got to buy them for every kid. I mean, those are the types of things, we're woefully behind. I mean, forget the aid downstate versus us, all these other districts are lightyears ahead of us. And the minority districts are able to get more of the grants for this, right? You qualify...
There's not a whole lot of grants out there for technology, unfortunately. The ones that are are very small.
Right, but they're not towards our demographic, uh...
They tend to go downstate a lot, and it's a state of state.
And they tend to go towards inner city.
Just a quick comment while you're talking about this. In the governor's, this is not just us, it's statewide. And in the governor's proposal, if you remember, there's that smart school referendum. It's like a two billion dollar, it's going to be on the November election for the smart schools money, which is essentially, it is the infrastructure and the technology that's missing statewide for, to support the, the Common Core initiative. So, they, since one doesn't does the other, it's part of your discussion with Jack. But that is something that is known amongst the powers that be, that schools are not prepared with their technology.
Right, but you had talked morning before about throwing it into a capital project when...
And that's another way that schools go about it. Yeah, because it's always such a big number. And so, I think that is a little bit, at least of a recognition from the state, that it's something that needs to be addressed, whether that referendum comes to pass, or if and when after that, schools really do eventually seek that money, that'll be an interesting concept.
I'm going to say, take all of the textbook technical money and, and put it towards something that's real.
They're being...
Kind of go corporations and massive textbooks and more.
They're being a little better about that. They let us, at the end of the year, at least, um, exchange hardware, software, and textbook aid. You know how we get those instructional expense-driven aids? They let us at least exchange the numbers altogether. So, if we're over on hardware and under on textbook, they'll still aid the whole thing. They're getting a little better, but I mean, it's not huge. It's something.
So, can we actively move towards that methodology as opposed to let it? I want to make sure I understand this. We always vote yes as a group when teachers come to us for textbooks or whatever it is. And they, many times, do it because they look at it like it's really not possible, district-wise. Is that fair assessment? They do the textbook because they don't think it's, it's not coming, and we don't say no, because it's a, because it's a funding piece.
Yeah, because it's a aided, it's a aided, I mean, it's expensive, yes.
What I'm asking is, are you telling me that if we decided to put that money, that aidful expense, towards technology? iPads? No.
Software.
Soft, only soft.
And actually, Dave and Jack work on this a lot, with what can be purchased as software, textbook versus textbook, textbook.
But then we didn't so that for sure as well. Problem with software, though, is about the time you buy it, it's updated the very next year. I mean, this is, that's frustrating.
And that's why it moves more towards online subscriptions, because it's currently continually updated. But then you commit annually to, you know, to continue to go back to it.
Morgan, are you allowed to, um, if you buy hardware and you buy iPads and those kind of things, are you allowed to, um, capitalize them over a period of time? No, it's take it all in one year, correct?
There are certain rates, so you don't need to certain courses, you work through the cost.
Okay, and same thing for software, you don't get to every time that you have to actually take it right away? Okay, whether you use it or not right away?
Yeah, but it's never, we're always, we don't have enough.
Okay. So, to Jack's point, a question for Jack. Um, how many of our teachers don't have iPads right now? Because I know last time we talked about this, most of these people didn't have them, there were some...
I don't think I can give you a hard number, but...
Just, I guess, it's nice.
Um, secondary science, secondary social studies do not have those. All elementary should have them, all special, and teachers should have them. Uh, art, no, the special, art, phys ed, they do not. So, it's mostly secondary, about half of secondary.
Are they allowed to use their personal iPads and connect to the network and you let them get scholastic?
We began that last year, and we're going to extend that this year, to step, as part of building that capacity.
Right, because most of that have their own personal.
And that's a good point, too.
You know, the training alone, when it's like, say, people...
Yeah.
To buy hardware and software is one thing, but you need to support it, you need to train people, you need to have techs that can fix it.
Right. Well, I know the software licenses are not cheap either. I mean, Microsoft software is very expensive, um, and they don't patch you like a brain control system, whether you're in a district. Um, so, but this, I think, I mean, as a board, I think we probably should look at in our budget, somehow trying to find a way, well, we can't go there all at one time, but just like, I mean, like, like we're here tonight, we'll be kind in our building updates, or we'll be kind in our technology updates. Um, it seems like we've been like Robin Peter to paint Paul all along, so we continue to do that. And now, without the, the funding, it's, it's just, it's been worse the last five years. Those things have to go back where you just can't invest, and that's just other things you have to do. So, as to make a conscious effort, I don't know where the money is going to come from, I really don't, but, um, that we need to start targeting those items, or at least those areas, that we need to start putting a little bit of money into. Um, and it's tough when you have to take it all, you have to take it all, because you can't spread it out over a period of time or even, um, capitalize it. But I, I think that that's our investment back in our infrastructure, because we're surpassed it, and it's, it's, it's not going to fall itself right now.
I agree, I agree. The kids shut down, basically. There was an article that I read, kids shutting down, when they, they're basically off, you know, the, the internet, or when they come into, into schools. And we need to engage them. We need to engage them. Last vision, continue to implement sound fiscal practices that work to support student learning. We're going to continue to actively, aggressively pursue any grants. As a matter of fact, one came up today, right, Mr. Paletti? That we'll be working on, is due August twenty-ninth, I believe, as to deal with strengthening, uh, principal leadership. Also, what we'd like to do is, is investigate the way we do things to see if we can become more effective or more efficient in the areas of staffing, in the areas of, of... more effective or more efficient in the areas of staffing, in the areas of classwork. In these areas, we always seem like we do what we've always done. We want to look at if there's different ways of doing it that becomes more effective and more efficient. And again, when we're looking here, we had a very healthy discussion on consolidation. That is also part of this, you know, sound fiscal practices. Again, our goal is hopefully to get these approved tonight, meet with the administrative team, that will go back to their buildings and develop action plans. A lot of the conversations I had Mr. Pletty take, copious notes, I believe, as in, we'll bring this back to our administrative team.
Joe, quick question. Have we ever considered just hiring a grant writer? And I say that because I know that the administration does it, I know some of the teachers do it, but, I mean, are really healthy, big grants don't come by just, you know, writing a couple of...
We have, we have. We have utilized grant writer before. As a matter of fact, helped with the final three grant.
Okay, so we obviously don't have one on staff, but we have a consultant that we would be able to go to because, I mean, at this point, I know there's not much technology. I know there's always some struggle with that, too. But I do think that a grant writer can be a salary. I mean, and that's, I mean, it's really, it's well worth the investment, especially if there's some big things out there that we really know, big ticket items that we need to purchase, or monies that we just need to have somewhere. How do I, how do I go about looking into that?
We have utilized a grant writer, and we can also look to utilize maybe a different grant writer.
Well, I don't, but when we use the factor, that's fine. I'm just saying, should we be looking at active grants? Not just ones that come to us, but somebody else, their job is nothing but looking for grants and writing for them. Is that Dave Pletty's job?
No, no, we get it, we get it from both these. Also, the grant writer that we have utilized before has continually semi-updated grants. We're still waiting to hear, believe it or not, from the I three grant, whether or not we receive that grant. That's a very substantial grant that we should have heard a year ago, but still right now, when you get on the federal website, it says pending.
Okay, so both of these have grant writers that we can use. Again, it's part of that being proactive and seeing what's out there instead of them just, you know, us reacting to it. I just think we've got to find money. We have no place else to get it from. We can't, can't ask our constituents anymore for it. And sure as heck, I don't know if we're going to hear it from the state, so we've got to do something to pay for the things that we, the wants that we, our wishes are to fulfill.
Again, you've heard me say that originally when these competitive brands came out, I was totally against it. I thought I shouldn't went in just to the total school aid. But after seeing some of the work that we have done with our competitive grants, it's been tremendous, and we've been very, very fortunate to have secured, you know, quite a few grants.
Joe, you mentioned the word efficiency, and there's a lot of, there are a lot of editorials and articles from professionals in education with regards to games' desire to look for efficiency. I'm sure you've read those. You know, I'd love to see, what is your administrative team? How do they define efficiency? What are the parameters around it? Because you can become efficient but not successful. And you can become very efficient at getting kids to take tests, become very efficient at getting kids to ingurgitate and recall. But there's very, maybe, I mean, most studies show there's very little implementation for you to work with out, and there's not synergy between one secondary and another because we've become, and I'm speaking primarily at the secondary level at this point, we've become so efficient at covering information and assessing their readiness to give us that information back that they're not able to, they're not able to apply it to other subcategories.
That's a great point, and that's why when we look at that career and college readiness, what we're looking at are the traits that beginning employees possess that are successful. Their communication skills, their ability to work as a team, their ability, you know, to be successful. Those are things that when we look at career and college readiness, it's not just two test scores. It's not just two test...
Okay, so that does not go to the regions really whatsoever. Those attributes we just talked about, they could, they could be parallel, but one is not indicative of the other. So how are you, with such, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is teachers, as part of the A P R...